Hey, everybody.
Good evening. How's everybody doing?
Doing good, Steve.
How are you doing?
Just dandy.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Joan.
Hi, Joan.
Hey, Joan, how are you doing tonight?
Oh, I didn't think I was gonna make it. Trying to wash dishes and get dinner off the table. It's tough work.
And you're retired.
Yeah, you would think. If you were retired, you have. I have news for you. It doesn't go this way. I swear I have less time, less time to do the things I need to do.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, I know. It keeps you busy, but you know, it's just, well, you know. How are you doing, Maureen? She's muted, so.
I am muted.
There you go.
You can hear background noise and whatnot, but. I wrote out the script. If you don't mind, when you're ready, I'll do it instead of you, if that's all right.
That's good. Everyone have a good time at the fair? Anyone else go to the fair except?
I was not in attendance.
Well, you probably had another fair.
No, but I had plenty of work to do.
There you go.
The Durham Fair, which I've been involved in for many years now. I'm no longer superintendent of our display. And apparently, the Christmas tree display is not gonna happen this year.
No.
That's very unfortunate, but they tried to make changes that didn't come to fruition and they called all the people that registered to participate to tell them not to bring their entries.
Wow. Any specific reason?
Um, well, we always shared the pavilion with the giant pumpkins.
Yep.
And so they did some reconfiguring of the displays. The giant pumpkins said they needed more space and so they asked they asked the Christmas trees to relocate to.
Wait a minute, how does that act? How does that, how does that play out? Pumpkin says to the Christmas tree, I need more space?
Yeah, well, pumpkin said to the fair association that they needed more space. And so we've gone through this in the past, but I think they kinda I don't know, there were inexperienced people taking charge for our display and for the overall horticulture coordination. So there were some issues going on, but they were gonna relocate the Christmas trees to a tent. And the fire marshal said, no go, and so they couldn't relocate the Christmas trees to a reasonable area other than to be outside, so there is no display.
That's too bad.
Yep.
And when is the Durham Fair?
This coming weekend.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah. So maybe next year.
Yeah, maybe, because probably everyone's gonna ask where they are, you know? Where's the Christmas tree thing?
Well, it was nice to be in with the pumpkins, because the pumpkins are a big draw for people, you know?
Yeah, people like pumpkins.
And.
Isn't that funny?
Yeah, it is funny.
Do you ever see how big these guys can grow those gourds? My god.
Oh, they're unbelievable, yeah.
They're huge.
They're like 1,100 pounds, some of them.
Well, the pumpkin, I think, at the Brolin Fair was not as big as the one they had last year. Two years ago, I mean, excuse me, last year, two years.
I'm sure it's staying carefully relocated.
Hmm, must be. Probably. Okay. Starting to get a little chilly. So I figured I better close the windows before we begin.
It's nice to finally have some cool weather.
Oh, I know, yeah. Yeah, but I hate to see what's behind it.
We're in, we're in New England, Joan, come on.
I know, I know. I'm already starting to think, when they gonna deliver those cords of wood? Gonna stack those things, too.
It's time.
Yeah, I know. Maybe I'll try one of your cone things this year, I don't know.
Oh, the how-housen?
I, I don't know, the, the, you know, where you lay them out in a circle and then you build up, like a, like a beehive.
It's not only is it very pretty to look at, but it's very easy.
All right, let me try that.
I'll give you a five, I'll give you a five-minute lesson, but don't ask me for more than five minutes.
Yeah, yeah, really.
My friends, my friends, don't, 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 don't wish the big W word to start any, any earlier than it should. You're still gonna go, let's have a fall first, huh?
Right. We're still in fall, right?
But you gotta prepare.
Hey, we just, we just started fall, okay? Let's chill, let's chill. Let's wait until mid-December at least.
It never does, why should we?
True, true.
Maureen?
Hey, guys, can you hear me? I pushed buttons I wasn't supposed to.
No, Steve, yeah, that's okay, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. My wife took care of it.
We're gonna have to call him Charlie Brown now.
There we go, all right.
I'm not moving the football. Yeah, really. Well, it hasn't started yet, has it? Anyway. All right, so, Maureen, you probably have a list of everyone that's here, because I know it's 7:05, just turned over. Do we have all the commissioners here, or?
We have a corner. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I believe. I'll read the role once you call the meeting to order, then.
Yeah, okay. Well, I, I'm happy to call the meeting to order for the Berlin Planning and Zoning Special Meeting, the agenda. So this is gonna be September 20th, 2021, and it's currently 7:05 PM, so welcome, everyone. And I'll ask Maureen to go through the roll call, so I know who I need to sit for who.
Okay, I'm gonna also announce that this is a remote access via Zoom. Special meeting of the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission has announced in its regular meeting of September 2nd, 2021, and noticed in the New Britain Herald, and posted on the town website and with the Berlin Town Clerk. As indicated on the agenda for this meeting, the remote Zoom access via video and telephone conference numbers were provided. Meeting, um, it was posted on the town website for commission members, applicants, and other interested persons to participate. For those listening, I ask that you mute your devices or phone if you are able, so that we can reduce the unnecessary background noise and interference. And that when it is time for individuals to speak, I announce that you unmute your phone and identify yourself. If a number of people ask to speak, we'll ask that you be patient until your turn. Two other very important reminders to everyone participating. Every time you speak, please state your name and title for the record. Second, be careful not to speak over one another, so that we have a clear record. And now, the roll call, just one last thing, is that the meeting is being recorded, and the recording will be posted to the town's website. Um, I'm going to start with John Michael O'Brien, who I believe is excused.
Yes.
George Millard also asked to be excused. Diane Jorsey.
Here.
Timothy Zigma. I do not see that he's on, so I'm going to mark him as excused. Ryan Rogan.
Here.
Chairman Beely.
Here.
Steve Wolman.
Here.
Peter Zarabozo, alternate.
Here.
Andrew Legnani, alternate. And Steve Biella Jr., alternate.
Here.
Commissioner Zigma here.
Change that for Commissioner Zigma. So we have two regular members are absent.
Okay, so with that in mind, can I ask Peter Zarabozo and Andrew Legnani to be seated for both John Michael O'Brien and George Millard? And then I think that just leaves Steve Biella in the wings for now, until we need him. Okay, all right, thank you, Maureen. So first item is the review of minutes for the second September 2nd, 2021 regular meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? And is there any questions, concerns, or corrections that we need to note at this time? Do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
Commissioner Jorsey, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
All right, thank you, Diane. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Legnani, seconds.
Legnani, okay, thank you. All righty, so that's that, and so now moving on to the scheduling of public hearings, the special permit site plan application of the Brandon Buchanan artisan building and remodeling to look, to locate his business activities office and showroom area at 2:30 Deming Road. The suggested date is October 21st. Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Jorsey, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for October 21st.
Okay, we have a second.
Commissioner Wolman will second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wolman. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Maybe I should just ask, is there anyone opposed? Hearing, none, they pass, okay. Proposed, item B is proposed amendment of the Berlin zoning regulations for Kevin Colstad, property development and facilities manager, Enterprise Holdings, to add a new section, which will be 6A3S, which would be for private transportation or auto rental services. And suggested dated this is October 21st. Do we have a motion or questions or whatever?
Commissioner Jorsey, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for October 21st.
Thank you, Diane. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Rogan will second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rogan. Further discussion? And all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, is there anyone opposed out there? Okay, great, thank you. Moving on to the public hearings, we have the proposed amendment of Maureen Juicy, AICP Acting Town Planner, to amend 10B4F of the Berlin zoning regulations regarding, regarding the expiration of earth removal permits. Okay, going into public hearing, do we have anyone to talk on the behalf, or are you it?
I believe I'm it.
Okay.
I do just wanna add, because of who I'm seeing on, and it is a public hearing, everyone's, you know, obviously, it is encouraged to participate and stay on, but I do see that at least one of the callers or the participants was one of those previous applicants that you just scheduled their public hearing for, and just to make the process clear to them, wanted to let them know that, so now it's been scheduled, it will be properly posted and announced with staff comments forthcoming prior to the October 21st meeting for your, your scheduled public hearings for those.
Terrific, thank you.
Yeah, so so on to the, the text amendment. The text amendment is with regard to excavation permits. And there have been some changes to excavation permits that, or rather, to state legislation with regard to land use permits that have changed the timeline for the validity of land use permits since we last discussed proposing this amendment. The amendment was discussed back in February because we found that our regulations had sections that were somewhat inconsistent. The site plan and special, site plan and subdivision development proposals were approvable for five years, extensions up to 10 years, in order for those developments to come to fruition. Excavation permits expired after two years, with a total of six years being allowed for total, total permit timeline. If the bond had been submitted in association with it, regardless of whether there's any activity on the site. That six years doesn't coincide with the statutes allowing for development proposals to to come to fruition and be, be finished up by statute. The recent legislation that we've been discussing so much includes provisions that allow for development proposals and subdivisions up to 19 years. So that's a significantly larger period of time, and results in an even greater disparity between the total allowed time period for an excavation permit and the total allowed time to complete a project. Um, since writing it, because most of the writing I did do despite not scheduling the public hearing, was thinking about the language as it relates to what had been the timelines prior to July 1st of this year. Um, where the 10 years did not seem as it, it seemed very reasonable to make that adjustment to 10 years, to coincide with development proposals, you know, instead of six. In the last couple of weeks, and since having comments come back from the Conservation Commission, which I'll share with you in a moment, I rethought that the wording, and I'm proposing today to just modify the wording a little bit more, and I'm gonna try to share that screen with you, if you bear with me one second. It's not that screen. Hold on, I'm finding the screen I need to share.
No problem, take your time.
Believe it's this one. Where this is the in, you're all seeing the screen with the text amendment now, or hopefully, those of you with it, or at least. Okay, so this is text amendment as distributed. I had attached the staff comments to it. I'd like to modify that a little bit further by suggesting that the line in bold be modified to say, notwithstanding the above maximums, and for that purpose being that there's no confusion that there, is it six years, is it more, is it not? So notwithstanding those, just forget about those. Earth removal permits approved in conjunction with an approved site development plan or subdivision plan may be renewed or extended for defined time periods by application to and approval by the commission to allow construction of unexpired development plans. So what I'm saying here is, instead of just having it coincide with the statutes, that instead, the commission can determine appropriate timelines. One of the things, and the reason I use the terminology renewed or extended is because a two-year or a four-year permit that was approved and extended already, while it might expire, they wouldn't have to come back for a new approval, similar to site plans, as long as they're still within the time period allowed for extensions by statute. If they did nothing, if it just sat idle for a number of years, then they could come in for a renewal of it, as opposed to having to go through the entire process again. Which is what they're allowed to do for site plans currently. We allow that for extensions.
Okay. So because this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public who's online with us that wishes to address the commission at this time regarding this application? All right. Commissioners, do we have some questions for our planner?
Commissioner Zigma, I guess what it is, is basically aligning the, our rules to the state new rules, and I think it's great.
Okay. Anyone else have any input?
Chairman, if I may continue with, I'm sorry, I didn't go back to the Conservation Commission's comments. And, which included mine, but I'm pulling them up on the screen now, although they jumped from one page to two, so hopefully you can see that. So the Conservation Commission did have the concerns with it being carte blanche allowed up to 19 years, because, and I think the commission also made these, some of the same comments, that the former timeline of up to two years, I mean, 10 years, seems like a reasonable timeline. 19 years is an extended period of time, and there may be other considerations to be evaluated during that time period, so they suggested that the renewal have to come back to the commission after the six-year period or a 10-year period. And that there could be changes, including environmental standards or technology, that makes the excavation permit somewhat somewhat fluid by the time you've hit a decade, as well as concern for ongoing disturbances for 19 years, if a disturbance was to continue for 19 years as opposed to be non-activated. And that's where I was trying to tweak the language to accommodate that.
Because if I remember this correctly, what happened is, we had an incident, and I think it was over off of Elton Road, where we had somebody who was excavating property, but not securing what was being dug out. In other words, it was a hill that he was working on, and it became a public safety thing, because kids in the wintertime all of a sudden discovered this huge massive mound of dirt in the backyard, and would go sledding down it, not realizing it was soft dirt. And so the neighborhood sort of raised concerns about, it wasn't secured, it wasn't regraded or dressed up to, you know, to make it through the winter month without all coming down. And so I, I think that's where the I wanna say the two-year revisit came in, or it might have been, and that's why it went to a max of five years, is not to not to micromanage the site, but to be able to have oversight. So in the event that things weren't going according to the bargain between the developer or landscape excavator or whatever, we would have some sort of recourse or control to make it a safe issue. So to look at it and say, well, you have 19 years. In thinking about this project, I mean, it took a while for them to come around and, and bring it into something that wasn't unsightly for the neighborhood. Obviously, they didn't mind so much, because it was way out in their backyard, but there was another development in the area that had to enjoy this mound of open sand dirt, and all these kids on dirt bikes and stuff. And obviously, you know, they couldn't control everything, but so I, I'm not sure how I feel about that. I, I think it's like Tim says, it's a good move to get it lined up. But I'm not sure, 19 years, wow, a lot can happen in that. But those, those are, that's my feeling at the time. Anyone else?
Commissioner Jorsey, just a thought to maybe build on what you're saying, Joan, and that is that maybe there should be additional language included that would mandate the permittee to secure the site from trespassing or you know, encroachment by people that might otherwise be harmed by trespassing?
Yeah, I mean, you know, secure it so it's not a hazard, or it's not an eyesore. I mean, I, I know it was a, a interesting but it, it was a thorn in the side for many years, if I remember correctly, and I think, Tim, you probably remember that project.
Yes.
It doesn't happen with everyone, it's just that was the one that kinda made us draw back a little bit. And say, hey, listen, that's why we're only gonna do excavation for like two years, and then you come back, because we wanna make sure you're holding up your end of the bargain. So I don't know how we're gonna do that with a 19-year thing. I mean, I understand where it's going, Maureen, I just don't know how to make it work.
Yeah, so that's where, if I may, that's where my question with regard to, to remodifying the language as shown on the screen now. And I wrote, and that's what's in blue now, so the black was what was originally proposed, as well as what I crossed out. And if it's blue on your screen, sometimes it depends on who's screening it, as, whose color it's in. But that's where I put, and changed the language to say renewed or extended for defined time periods by application to and approval by the commission, and put that in instead of what you got in your initial packets, which said with the approval of the site plan and subdivision plan extension as allowed by statutes, blah, 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 blah. You know, instead of saying as allowed by statute, instead, I put in for a defined time period by application to and approval by the commission. So maybe not stuck at the two years, if we know it's a down economy or something, or they know they won't actually start for, you know.
Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna hold them back, and we don't wanna bog it down too much, but we just wanna make sure that whatever is done is done right.
Yeah, and so that was my attempt at that, trying to figure out what language could work. I, I had not, or wasn't aware of that situation that happened that prompted the two years, I didn't find that in my
That's okay, I, I probably.
That's really great information, and right now, I'm actually flipping through the book, trying to see what the other provisions are. The earth removal, the removal of earth materials section has quite a number of standards, and I'm wondering if the securing the site might be in one of the other sections, as opposed to 4F, it might be somewhere else in section 10.
Yeah.
And so I'm, I'm looking to see what other assurances I find in there.
That's okay, I think.
They do have, in the, in the regulation, and with your initial earth removal permit, the provision does state, in granting an earth removal permit, the commission may attach such conditions and safeguards as may be required to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare, and to assure continued compliance with the section. Including but not limited to, and it continues, you know, with several standards. So I'm thinking that section might have also been added at that time, and at the, my interpretation, and if the language is tight enough to to indicate it, would be that when you do grant a renewal or an extension, those conditions could be reiterated or beefed up if they've shown to not be. if they've shown to not be adequate until such time as the renewal.
Okay. That might work. I mean, I don't want to bog the applicants down if they're doing, if they're doing a big subdivision or whatever, and they have to move earth around and stuff. I don't want to tie them up, I just want to make sure that they, like, hold up their end of the bargain. And if they are going to be doing excavation for the pro, you know, they're going to be addressing it and securing the site as they go along. But, yeah, I think we almost need to revisit it, or at least have staff go out and see it and say, you know, report back to the commission, say, you know, he's doing a great job, and we're very satisfied, and we're going to let him go on. We've already, you know, given him a renew for the two years. You know, so it, we could be something like just a staff, you know, drive-by inspection or something. But I don't know, what does anyone else think about this?
I can understand, Commissioner Rogan, I can understand the need to secure the site. It seems like that's been dealt with in the other regulation. This does seem like housekeeping to me, I wouldn't want to overcomplicate it. So that, I mean, that's kind of where I, I think Maureen did a good job of kind of, you know, make it fit with the inconsistency that we have in our regulations. I don't want to make it too difficult where we, like you say, start scaring away perspective business.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anyone else have any suggestions?
This is Commissioner Wolman. I, I think, going to your point of not bogging it down, I think if we just staffed did the review, if we had some concerns with the site not being in the safety to the public, to have the staff run out there and determine, I don't think it necessarily has to come back to us for a decision. You know, planning and zoning does this daily to stuff to make sure that we're in compliance. So, you know, my thought would be to let Maureen or her staff take care of it and just bless it.
Okay. All right, that's great. Anyone else, Tim? Right?
Yeah.
Can't hear you, Tim. All right, Tim, I'm having a problem with your audio. No, it's not working, Tim.
I mean, now?
Yeah, a little bit, yeah. Try that.
Now?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, try it again, Tim, I'm sorry.
The enforcement officers should be asked...
Tim, we're getting like every fourth, we get like three or four words, and then you cut out.
Okay.
Tim, I'm going to let you play with the audio. I'm going to go and see if one of the other commissioners, maybe Peter Zerbozo, or maybe Andrew Legnani has something that they'd like to chime in. I'll come back to you, Tim, okay? But we're, we don't have audio for you.
Commissioner Zerbozo, I agree that we should allow staff the ability to oversee any concerns.
Okay, thank you, Peter. And Mr. Legnani? Do you have any comments?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Legnani. I concur with Commissioner Wolman and Commissioner Zerbozo on this. I think Maureen and her, and her staff are... I personally do a great job over there, so, you know.
Yeah, I know.
Having her oversee it, not a big deal, not a big deal, her and the zoning enforcement officer, so.
Yeah.
Being able to make sure of that, yeah.
Exactly, and then if there's any big concerns, you can always come back to us.
Precisely.
I mean, that, that's the whole reason why we meet twice a month.
All right, thank you, Andrew. And, Tim, I'm going to go back to you. Do you have, do you have sound yet, Tim?
Commissioner Rogan, while we wait for Tim, maybe he can log out, log back in. The other thought about this is that when we're doing the site plan, if we have any major concerns, we always have the ability then to put conditions in that would help our staff in dealing with any potential issues that we may see coming forth.
Yeah, we should probably take that into consideration, especially if they do, you know, they have excavation or land removal, then we'll watch for that. I'm going to go one more time to Tim, and then I'm going to give up on you, baby. Tim, anything?
I think he might be off right now.
Okay.
Although maybe he could back on the phone.
But Maureen, you don't have a problem with what the commission is suggesting, right? I mean, obviously, if you're going to see a problem, you're going to come back to us with it, but...
No, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to put it into words and determine if, well, two, two things. I did want to point out that in the current regulation, you know, I said it had a bunch of different sections. One of the sections does say, "If at any time the commission finds that the earth removal operation is not being conducted in accordance with the approved permit, the commission shall order the applicant to cease operation, and may revoke the permit after proper noticing."
Okay.
This is Commissioner Wolman, and we don't even have to add that into the language, it's already in our regs.
Right, that's, that's my point, is there are most of the items that you've noted, both adding conditions, adding conditions at the time of the renewal, or, or revoking the permit, and, I believe I just saw and lost it, I'm sorry, but the secure, you know, language that dealt with the securing and the access and the dangers, also all within the existing language and other sections of this provision. This section 4F really dealt with the timeline of the expiration, and whether or not, and so therefore, with this proposal, whether or not renewals are necessary, and at what kind of timeline, and for how long. The, the problem from the staff standpoint that we saw with the regulation was that they allowed for the maximum of six years ever, and that doesn't coincide with the up to nineteen years of a development plan. You know, the, the regulation said you can get three renewals, or two renewals, one approval, and two two-year renewals for a total of six, six years for the life. And that seems not to coincide with development ability, or doesn't...
Out of curiosity, I know you don't have the answer for this, but why did the state go to nineteen years on the development? That's an awful long time.
It seems to be a commonly asked and yet almost rhetorical question that no one's, that I haven't garnered the answer to yet.
Wow.
Nineteen years is, is, seems to be a long period of time that, that considerations can change. We've certainly seen it, although we do have a couple of projects that have lasted that long renewed, or rather, you had reapproval of a couple of projects that had lasted longer than they were permitted to allow in the last couple of years. Beckley Farms, for instance, but it's a five-phase project that, you know, has actually been each phase for a shorter period of time. And I'm trying to remember what the other project. Was certainly Depot Crossing hit a, a bubble or a bump, and they sat idle for a number of years, and it had to come back and get reapproved, and that's what, what happened in both those instances, they got reapprovals. Oh, I know Silver Island was the other one, where they came in and they got a new approval, so they started their timeline over again.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioners, any other questions or concerns?
I just, I have a couple of thoughts going through my head to share. The nineteen years, I guess, you know, I do agree with the comments from the Conservation Commission, and I think, and also the other comments with respect to that timeframe from the commission. And so I'm thinking the, the ten-year mark as a good time maybe to have the applicant come back to planning and zoning. But in between, like, leading up to the ten years, have staff be responsible, I guess, for checking up on them rather than having them come back to the commission for those intermittent timeframes. But the concern that I have is turnover of staff over a ten- or twenty-year period, and whether or not staff, whether or not we can reliably feel that we have the resources available to give them that task. Because as it is, we know how busy Maureen is, just trying to prep for our meetings and, you know, do all the things that, that we have as part of our normal business, and to task them with additional field work just is maybe something that is coming to mind for me, but it might be an easier task to do the field check than it is to get everything on the agenda and, you know, lined up. So Maureen maybe could give us some feedback on that. And then the other thing is, with respect to the issuing of an order for failing to comply with the safety requirements that already exist in the regulations, when the regulation says that the commission would issue an order, is that actually an order that's issued by the planner? Or does that actually have to come to the commission? Because that seems like it could be an order issued by staff rather than, than coming before planning and zoning.
From Maureen's standpoint, yes, we are very busy, and yes, it is often hard. It is very difficult to manage the, the multiple tasks at different, different timing. Right now, the, having Carol hired as the zoning enforcement officer as opposed to the two hats of zoning enforcement officer and assistant town planner, we have prioritized her catching up on a lot of enforcement that had been put off, given timelines that applications have to go through. So I can understand that concern, and again, that's, that's not really in anyone's control as to what the volume is that comes through the office, but we're continuing to work to streamline and, and make it more efficient. So we appreciate your support and ideas to help us do that, so I appreciate that. I'm looking back again now to see what I, what I just read to you about the commission may, and seeing if there's another line that talks about the zoning officer. I do know that with soil erosion controls in general, and I think this would fall within the parameters of needing soil erosion controls, at any given time, the zoning officer can issue an order for immediate compliance, and doesn't have to wait to bring it to the commission or get the commission to say something's not working. So again, I think that's probably covered in multiple sections of the regs. You just apply different, different sections and get this end result being similar, or non-compliance with the site plan, that's also another, you know, or with an approval. When we have non-compliance with an approval, we can also issue orders as down.
Okay.
I did just add in, again, based on the discussion, change the language on your screen again to say, "Notwithstanding the above maximums, earth removal permits approved in conjunction with an approved site development plan or subdivision plan are approved for", I left in the "for up to", but, well, I'm going to say for up to ten years, and renewed or extended for defined time periods by application to and approval by the commission to allow for construction of an expired development plan. I think that needs to be, I think I left out of. An "and" or a "the" needs to be fixed, give me a second. Or if someone else has a suggestion, I will entertain it.
Okay, hang on.
This is Commissioner Zigmund, just saying I'm back on the line.
Yes, okay, Tim, we can hear you clearly. Is there something you wanted to add?
No, no, that was fine, I think you addressed the, I'm in an area that the wifi is not good at, and cell service isn't good, so sitting in a bus.
Oh, jeez. Well, but you're doing, you're doing mighty fine now. So if you have something you'd like to say, while the connection is there and working, this would be the time.
No, no, I, I'm just, I was thinking that the zoning enforcement officer, if we could put in there that the zoning enforcement officer should review the application every five years, or, or whatever number of years, or the applicant should come to the zoning enforcement officer and say, "Hey, are we doing right?", basically, every five years during the nineteen years.
Yeah.
You know, just, just to, just to have something in there that it is reviewed, you know?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Well, how do you feel about the ten-year mark? Ten years...
I'd rather go with the ten years than nineteen, that's for sure.
Yeah, I know, nineteen seems to be, I, I'm not sure what the state was thinking.
Or, or the applicant's got to come in in ten years and get the review by zoning enforcement officer in ten years.
I, I mean, in ten years, but I don't think it probably, they will probably do an evaluation, because if there's going to be an issue, it's probably going to be, you know, in the making. You don't want to go ten years with an issue and then have it fixed. You'd like to have it fixed two or five years into the process. I'm not saying everyone's going to do that, but just to, you know, to keep it, just going in the right direction.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, that's why that review's got to be there. Now, I don't, I don't...
I think staff can handle it. I mean, I think that we can walk out there and say, "Something's not right", or, "Boy, what a mess", or, "Jeez, this looks like a safety issue", you know, and be able to talk to the people. I'm sure that most of the applicants will be very agreeable with that and, and address the issues, you know?
So, we, we could just put it to the zoning officer that, that any permit has to be inspected so often, whatever it is. Whatever we come up with, five years, four years, whatever we come up with, you know, that, that it should be reviewed, just go out there and make sure they're not doing something dangerous, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. All righty, anyone else on the commission? Well, poor Maureen's trying to rewrite regulations. Okay, Maureen, what we got? All right, now standing there, okay, hers removal permit.
I'm going to bounce it up a little bigger in case anyone...
Oh, yeah, please.
Might work.
That would help me.
Is that a little better?
Yeah, much better. Okay, so earth removal permits approved in conjunction with the approved site plan, site development plan, or subdivision plan.
So, so what that is doing is making it separate from a general earth removal permit that someone is just doing speculatively.
Okay.
This, the first couple of sentences deal with an earth removal permit that's not necessarily, or what, rather, that was the earth removal permit regulation. And what we're trying to do is call out this, this condition, this special circumstance where it's associated with a site development plan that's been approved.
Okay.
So the second part from the notwithstanding... So the second part from the notwithstanding being that they're only allowed.
Alright, so notwithstanding the above maximums, earth removal permits approved in conjunction with an approved site plan, develop, site development plan or a subdivision plan will be approved for up to five years and are or or and can be renewed or extended for a defined period, time period by application to and approval by the commission to allow construction of an expired development plan. Wait. Alright, nevertheless, notwithstanding the above maximum, earth removal permits approved in conjunction with an approved site development plan or a subdivision plan will be approved for up to ten years and can be renewed or extended for a defined time period by application to and with approval by the commission to allow construction of the unexpired development plan? I don't know. Help, who's an English major out there?
Can be renewed.
Alright. Be renewed for defined for defined time. By application to and with approval from the commission to allow, I don't know. For a defined will be approved for up to ten years and can be renewed.
If you want it to be maybe approved.
You want it to be maybe approved? As opposed to will be approved?
Well, I think, I don't think you wanna commit until you know what it is.
Troubleshooting here.
I guess as I'm looking at this, the first part. If the permit is not associated with a subdivision plan, they have to come back to us every two years for a maximum of six. If we're talking about zoning enforcement drive-by or checkup. It seems like we could simplify life and take out the subdivision requirement and just make it a ten-year across the board for, you know, maximum nineteen years. They have to come back at ten years with checkups at five years before you come to that ten-year mark. That just would simplify it rather than one, you know, do they or don't they have a subdivision approval? Is the subdivision approval in good standing or not? I don't know, seems it could be simplified.
Simplify away. But now you're back to the nineteen years.
Well, no, we're still talking about a ten-year. I I think they can max at nineteen years, but I think from, you know, what Tim and I are both saying. And I kinda think maybe others agree is have them, have the applicant come back at the ten-year mark to the commission, but have the zoning enforcement officer do some checks before the ten-year mark. Either at two years or five years.
So really, we don't even have to mention the nineteen years. We just have it up to ten years.
This is Commissioner Wallman. I think if we just stayed with what Maureen said initially about conjoined, joining it with the subdivision. You take the year situation out of it. And then we're leaving it up to staff to review if we have safety concerns. You're gonna know once they start doing work out there when you need to go check on it as opposed to automatically just checking it every two, five or six years, whatever. But I think Maureen started off with the the plan that made the best sense because she put it in conjunction with the subdivision approval. And then you don't get into all this.
Does that sound with everyone?
I guess to me, it doesn't make sense to max out at six years where there is no subdivision.
Okay, hold on. I think if it's just earth removal thing, let's just make it at six years. I think leave that portion the way it is. But really, what we're, what I I think what we're trying to do is figure out what to do when it's when it's in conjunction with the site plan, right, Maureen?
That was, that was the intent to start with. I hadn't into situations relating to site plans because the timeline conflict I was seeing was, was with site plans and subdivision plans having different timeline and the the regulations as they stand today, not allowing for that development to finish after six years. If you stop, if your excavation ran out, you can't finish excavating even though they would have had more years to keep the project. So I was just trying to fix that inconsistency. And go back into the dive that deep for the other types of permits.
So if it's.
This is Commissioner Wallman again.
Yes, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, Joan. Yeah, I think we're getting off to the side on this, so to speak. Maureen's trying to tie it into the subdivision and then we're going on, but what are we doing with the other earth removal? It's not a subdivision. That's not what's on, what we're discussing. We're discussing tying this in with the subdivision. So if we wanna do something later with the earth removal, not related to subdivision, that's fine, but I don't think you should tie it into this text.
Okay. Agreed. That should just be left separate. So we're going back to the original, so we're going with the ten years, correct? Is that? Is that agreeable to the rest of the commission?
This is Commissioner Wallman. That's kinda what I'm agreeing with.
Okay, alright. So other commissioners, how do you feel about the ten years with the subdivision?
Hi, Commissioner Rogan. I'm good with the ten years. And I know that we're asking Maureen, the zoning department, a lot about everything they have on their plate. But I'd also like the rest reassured that when it comes to a site plan. Understand what her purview of is, but there's also other eyes from the town on it regarding other land use. So I think we, all of them. I think they can handle it.
Yeah, between, you know, zoning and building and Maureen, we should be okay. We should be covered with that. Anyone else? Commissioner Zerbozo, Commissioner Legnani?
Zerbozo, I'm in agreement with Wallman in the ten year.
Mr. Legnani?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Legnani. I'm in agreement with Brian Rogan. With this one, yeah, Commissioner Rogan.
Okay, no problem. And Diana, are we good with that?
I disagree with I disagree with the fact that we're looking at only one portion of this because we are in fact looking at the whole paragraph. But if the commission is wanting to stick with just the subdivision aspect of the paragraph, I would be okay with that, but I also disagree with Commissioner Rogan with respect to relying on other departments to be watching out for things that are responsible, are the responsibility of the zoning enforcement officer. Because that's where you're gonna get into problems where, you know, something is gonna happen and everybody's gonna assume that the other person took care of it, so.
No, I think, I I think probably what I, Ms. Rogan can speak for himself, but I had the impression that he thought maybe the zoning enforcement officer would be the one that that would see any issues at it and be able to report it to Maureen or even Maureen herself. Be able to go out. And I do understand, we are talking about the same one paragraph. But I think from what I understood from Maureen, we were just trying to line up the second half of that paragraph, which is tied to subdivisions. And what the state is is proposing at the nineteen years and how we feel about that. And I think nineteen years is way too out. I agree that ten years is a lot more workable.
Commissioner Rogan. I I I agree with what Commissioner George is saying is fair. I guess the comment that I was making is that I would hope that the, I guess, that's maybe not the right approach to something is that, I hope. But that the other, you know, if you had the building department out there or Indian weapons out there and they noticed something egregious that they would approach zoning and help be the eyes and ears to make sure that our zoning department corrected it. Would be the ultimate responsibility of our department. I just, that's the point that I was trying to make is that I think we have eyes and ears out there. And I hope they'd all work in conjunction to look out for one another.
If, if I may find out another and it doesn't, it does not cover all the motion control issues and whatnot that in some of the the problems that can be raised. But one of the other provisions in this entire section on excavation materials is that every six months after the approval of the earth removal permit, the applicant shall submit to the commission information prepared and certified by a professional engineer regarding the progress of their operation, including the amount of material removed, existing contours, the cross-sections in the area excavated during the preceding six-month period. And then it has, you know, the penalties for non non-reporting are then listed. But one of the things here is, and it called this to our attention, was where they're actually been. And I can pretty much guarantee you anywhere they're doing excavation, we'll probably be getting regular reports from the neighbors, if not the applicant himself or herself. However, that one of these issues here was those sites that got approval, but then nothing was done. Where nothing is being done, but they're they haven't, haven't started any work. So we do have a reporting period also. Already worked into the regs and with that six-month, every six-month period. I think that would cause staff to go out on a regular basis, on a scheduled basis to to check on the earth removal. It's more those situations where we don't know they're working and they have to fix their safety standard. I'll call them safety, but safety and soil erosion standards too, to not become a hazard. That we gotta know they're working, so to go out there. And I think the other portions of the regulations do call for them to report to us that they're working.
Okay. Alright, excellent. Any other questions or comments? Alright. And I'll entertain a motion.
One second, can I speak up for a second?
Sure you can.
This is Carl Cearcia. I don't know if the public has a chance to chime in on anything at this point.
Yes, well, this is still in the public hearing. So can I have the name and address for the record, please, so that we can?
It's Carl Cearcia, two-three-two-six Berlin Turnpike, Berlin.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cearcia, and your feedback for the commission.
Yeah, and I was going in and out with my service here a little bit, so I wasn't sure if this was brought up or not. But I had talked to Maureen about this a little bit earlier today. We were talking about starting the clock, basically, for these timelines. Like the excavation, if you've got ten years or whatever it is, the in order to not have an open pit or or ongoing, you know, excavation site or whatever, that's going on for nineteen years or whatever it is. But just to start the clock when the shovel's in the ground for the first time. So if you get a permit, you get a, if you get an approval for a subdivision and you don't do anything with it for five years, and then you start, well, that should start. We're hoping, I'm hoping that maybe that would start the clock for the, say, the ten years for your excavation.
Okay.
This is Maureen. I can respond or explain a little to the commission on that. Right now, the clock for the excavation permit, it does not start at your, at the commission's approval. It starts at the submission of the bond. So what in this instance happened is the bond was submitted, but the shovel was not in the ground. But even still, we can have the situation. I was trying to be broad in in my application of thinking of what how to fix the problems in more ways than one and what other scenarios may happen. And developments also have the situation where they're stalled. So they might put the shovel in the ground and work for a year, but then they might stall for a while before they actually do more substantial work or move on to the next area that needs excavation. They may excavate one area and then, you know, build those houses, what have you, and several years down the road. Have the investment to excavate the next area.
But wouldn't that, wouldn't that then be helped by the ten years?
Yes, it would be helped by the ten years.
Okay, alright.
Exactly. Now, that was where I was going with something more. As opposed to just changing the other regulation that has to do with the bonding. Instead, change the timelines. Where the conflict was more than the.
So would the excavation permit start, or should I say the? Well, the starting of the of the project clock starts with the approval and with the bond, correct?
With the approval, but the excavation bonds, from the language in the regulation, does it seem to have to be submitted simultaneously with the approval, the bond? And actually, with any project, the soil erosion bonds, the bonds don't need to be. They can't work until they submit the bond, but they don't, and so they don't have to submit the bond immediately, but they can't work until the bond's submitted.
Yeah, so if you had somebody who had an approval in December and wasn't planning to start until April or March, then that clock wouldn't start until April or March. The bonds would be posted and everything else.
Right. Their approval period for the for the statutory loud approval of their project begins with the date the commission approves the project. But for the bonding doesn't, and timeline for an excavation doesn't start until the bond is submitted. Which is required to be submitted until they're actually starting to work.
Okay. Is there a timeline, just out of curiosity, when they have to submit the bond from the date of approval? Do they have a window of time?
I don't think so. I do not think so.
Alright, I again, just going to the example of somebody gets an approval in November or December and doesn't plan to start until the spring or summer. I wouldn't want them to lose that six months they would need. So that's good to know. Alright. So I think that that, I I think, Mr. Cearcia, that might would, might help you out in that respect. Because the clock would start with the bond. Okay, any other comments, Commissioner? We have a motion to close the public hearing?
Commissioner Wallman, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Steve. Any second?
Commissioner Rogan, any second?
Who had the second? I couldn't hear.
Commissioner Rogan, I mean, me and Commissioner Legnani made it at the same time, but.
Well, I'll give it to you, Mr. Rogan, because I gave him the other one. Okay. Alrighty, further discussion on that? So all those in favor of closing the public hearing, I need an eye. Is there anyone opposed? Alright, okay, so that's that. Move on to old business, which just happens to be the proposed amendment by Maureen. The acting town planner to amend. All right. Okay, so that's that. Move on to old business, which just happens to be the proposed amendment by Maureen, the acting town planner to amend. Ten B four F of the Berlin zoning regulations, which is just what we all discussed. Okay. So, um, how do we feel about this? I mean, I think, I think actually we did a pretty good job of, uh, getting together and finding a way through it. And it seems to work for staff and seems to work for the commissions and the public as well. But maybe some of you guys are having afterthoughts.
This is Commissioner Wallman.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the text amendment as written by Maureen.
All right, thank you, Steve. We have a second?
Zerbozo.
All righty, Peter, thank you. Uh, Peter Zerbozo for the record. Seconded and for the discussion, then all those in favor?
Chairman Bailey, can I ask for, uh, can I ask for a clarification of that?
Yeah. Okay.
You hear me? Um, this is Maureen speaking and I'm just wondering, uh, he said as written, is that as written and modified? During the public hearing or is that, so it's what's on the screen right now or what was?
This is Commissioner Wallman. As written and modified during the meeting.
Okay, and what, so what appears on your screens right now?
I believe that that's correct. Do you want to read it, Maureen?
I just want to be sure.
All right. Steve, I don't know if you can see the screen or if you're calling in. Do you need Maureen to read the screen off for you?
No, I don't. I've been keeping track. I know what she said. I'm comfortable with what she has on the screen.
Okay, thank you. So further discussion, then all those in favor?
Wait, I have, hang on.
Aye.
Oh, wait. You're moving too fast, so.
Oh, sorry.
The only, the only question I have is, um, where it states clearly that staff will be doing the checkup before the ten-year period.
Hey, Maureen, do you have that?
Um, repeat that question. I guess I got confused by it.
It's, I'm, it's not clearly stated that staff has responsibility to do any checkup prior to the ten-year mark.
Um, okay, let's see what we can add. Um, I was counting on the other provisions of the regulations, so let's.
No problem.
Maureen, can we add now that the public hearing is closed?
Yes, because I think the, the public hearing may be closed, but we're just in discussion.
Yeah, so those were things that we discussed during the hearing that. Just need, we need to make sure the motion incorporates that.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that the motion would incorporate that and, um.
Okay, just, just wanted to double check to make sure.
Oh, no, 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 I understand what you're saying. Because we may ask Steve that to adjust his, uh, to amend his motion anyway.
Okay.
All right, but he, she's just looking to her a spot to put it in. Any suggestion, Diane? Maybe approve for up to.
Well, I even, I, I think, and Maureen might know better, but it, it seems like it, even if it was just a part of the record in the motion.
Okay.
That that's the intent. Um, I think it needs to be stated clearly.
All right.
Commissioner Rogan?
Yes.
I think you, if you did want to add it into the text, you could probably put it after the ten years and say. Uh, maybe approved up to ten years with a review by staff and by the end can be renewed or extended for. I think that would fit smoothly. If that.
I'm sorry, that got garbled from my, I can't, I couldn't understand that.
I was saying, if you wanted to put a review, uh, aspect into the text. Uh, after the ten-year, uh, mark in the text, it forces and can be renewed. I think you could fit something in there smoothly. Uh, that would work. Yes, right there, if you want to put, uh, review at five years.
With staff oversight or review?
With regular monitoring?
Looks good to me.
I. Um.
Staff.
Time was the CD. Um, I, I would just put staff. Yeah, I would.
Yeah.
And can be renewed or extended by, blah, 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 blah. Yeah, I think that would do it. It's a little, well.
Hi, this is Commissioner Wallman. I got bounced out. I just got back in, sorry.
Okay. Well, you missed a big discussion.
Sorry, I wouldn't take my passcode. I apologize.
No, 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 that's okay. Maureen, do you want to tell them what we did?
So we're trying to add a place in here that adds the staff oversight. Um. And I actually, just adding with regularly monitoring seems to be a little too ambiguous. Um, and wouldn't give any teeth. So I'm trying to think of, uh.
Um, maybe set monitored by staff, no less than each five years.
Commissioner Rogan?
Maureen, didn't you just read a regulation that said that you monitor that?
Um, that they come back every, um, six months with the explanation itself and that's contours.
So, Commissioner Rogan, I have an idea of trying to get her out that, uh, record their monitoring. Seeing as the original earth removal permit was granted for two years. Why don't you say biannual monitoring by staff?
Oh, okay.
You mean biennial?
Yeah, I was.
Biannual is twice a year.
Right.
Yes.
I knew, I always get that one wrong. Did I spell it right?
I do too, so don't, so I, I'm, I'm just bad with that, you know, so.
Um. How about renewal?
I'd say review.
I put review. Because you're not reviewing anything, you're just reviewing it. My zoning staff and can be renewed. Or extended for defined time periods by applications to. And.
Extended for additional?
I don't think you need additional. Saying, you're already saying you're defining the time period.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to go, I, I was trying to, um, make it clear that it was beyond the ten years. So once you've made ten years, additional time can be added, is where I was going with the additional, but I get, I. Sometimes add too many words. Less words is effective quite often.
Do we want to say and with approval by the commission? In other words, you've got, um. Renewed or extended for defined time periods by application to and with approval by the commission to allow construction of an unexpired.
So it's no sample.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Diane, you have more experience writing these things than I do.
I don't know about that.
I'll give it to you ladies. All right. But I will ask Mr. Wallman if he'll extend his motion.
Yeah, that's right, it's Commissioner Wallman, that's fine.
Okay, fine. Mr. Zerbozo, will you amend your second?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. No commissions, that's the way it reads. Can I call for the vote? Is there any other further discussion?
I'll do a roll call if you want.
Sure, if that's easy for your record, go ahead.
I think with a public hearing item, it's best.
Okay.
Mr. George.
Aye.
Mr. Zigot.
Aye.
Mr. Rogan?
Aye.
Chairman Bailey?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Wallman?
Aye.
Um, Commissioner Zerbozo?
Aye.
And Commissioner Legnani?
Aye.
Okay, that's it. Now, do we have? Oh, good, Maureen?
Yep, thank you, that was unanimous.
All righty, motion to adjourn then.
Motion, Commissioner Legnani, motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Do we have a second?
Mr. George, I'll second.
All right, thank you, Diane, for the discussion, then all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Is there anyone out there opposed? All right, so move eight seventeen for the record.
Thank you.
All right, no problem. Thank you. Talk to you tomorrow, Maureen.
Bye.
Good night, everyone.
Good everyone.
All right, bye-bye.